Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone here today for the Oak Island Planning Board, ones watching on TV and the ones in person. I'd like to ask you to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is saying, one nation, under our collective individual liberty and justice.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Minutes from last month.
Chairman, I think Dural Gilbert was unable to attend today, so I'd like to make a motion to approve his absence or excuse his absence today.
Second. All in favor? Minutes from last month. Carrie?
Let me see. No, I don't have anything, but I did want to say that, thank Erin for the layout of the minutes in terms of the text amendments, and that was very, made it very easy to read and get, roll through, so thank you, Erin, for that.
Reese. Mark.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Public comment. We do have someone to make. Please state your name and address, please.
I'm John McLendon. I live at 5017. I'm just off the island, we're down at the old ridge. I am the president of the South Harbor Master Property Owners Association, so I'm here representing a little more than 500 properties in Oak Island. I like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are a planned development. We were annexed into Oak Island when towns could just come and grab anything adjacent to them a long time ago. All of our properties are covered under a state stormwater permit. Our BUAs are not 25%. None of them are. They are all greater. And so I'm here to talk about, by the way, the tree ordinance, which, thank you very much. Great job. I'm here to make some suggestions for improvement on the tree ordinance. Glen Cove, Westport Village, Green and Golf Village surrounding Oak Island Golf Course. The Oak Island Golf Course supplies our open space, and they are part of the permit. So, we can't count those legacy trees on the golf course, but that's where the stormwater 25% comes from. So our BUA limits for the single-family residences around the golf course range from 32 to 38%, which reduces the area that we can put trees in. There's a 60-foot right-of-way in favor of the master POA that they cannot put trees in because it's a stormwater swale, and woody vegetation is not allowed, further reducing the property that they can put trees in. And I've got owners that want to build, they want to put in trees, and they go, I've got no place to put them. They've got to be 10 feet apart, but they just don't fit. So the marine, these are all low-density permits. The Marina area is a high-density permit. The buildings are even bigger, 40, 50, 60%. And again, we've got a right-of-way, this master has a right-of-way in the front yards, 20-foot in, and we also have CAMA 404 lines. Can't go over those lines, the state will come in and get you. So, issue one. There's a 220 square foot per DBH requirement for tree planting. It doesn't work where state stormwater permits vary the BUA limits. It looks like it was for 25%, which is Oak Island, right? And, so, my suggestion, the per-square-footage open space be defined as lot size excluding the byright BUA, the building footprint, the CAMA 404 lines, and the stormwater right-of-way, none of which you can put trees in. We've got one property that all of you all know, it's Rusty Hooks. He's got a CAMA 404 line right around his building. He can't put a single tree in.
Your three minutes is up.
I'm almost done.
Okay, thank you.
The two DBH, issue two, the two DBH is allowed to be planted, but only six DBH counts towards a credit. What happens if I develop? I put in all my two-inch trees. Two years later, my wife tells me, oh, we're doing something else on the property. I just put in a bunch of trees, and they don't count? I've got to do it again. Now, I know Mr. Gold will probably say, eh, never mind, but that's not in the statute. It needs to be in the statute. Issue three. All the trees in the first part of the table, which the ones we're required to plant, are 30-foot-tall trees. When I lived in Raleigh, Fran took out my truck, my boat, and two trees on the house. Florence, I live in a six-building condo, Florence took four of our roofs. So we don't want trees within 30 feet, or you can include the second part of the table in the ordinance. Those provide tree canopy, just like the 30-foot trees, and they are not as likely to blow over. You know, they yope, native species. Gray tree, good canopy, sucks up the water, which is what we want. So that concludes my remarks. It's only, what, one minute over?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if he by chance would have his comments that he could submit, but...
I'll send this to...
Clark, that would be good.
Please, I'll send this to the...
Thank you. Any further comment? Public comment closed. U business, proposed text amendment, Matt.
Just waiting for it to load up. All right. So the first one on the schedule is a UDO text amendment. Oh, that's not our first one. I think Mike's working on it. The first one is a UDO text amendment to Section 6.5, the Table of Uses and Activities. Background, Josh Austin, applicant, has submitted a proposal for a text amendment to Article 6, Section 5 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Specifically, the request is to allow light manufacturing and/or artisan's workshop as a byright use in the CLD, Commercial Low Density Zoning District. So we're going to talk about light manufacturing first. The CLD district is designated to provide commercial services to facilities, to residential neighborhoods, and highway-oriented tourist businesses. The characteristic of the CLD zoning district include their primarily located in outline areas, they're adjacent to a major thoroughfare, and they include setbacks from adjacent major thoroughfares and residential uses. Section 7.20 establishes supplemental regulations for manufacturing uses. Most are specific to processes that include the use of hazardous chemicals and materials or storage and/or manufacturing of petroleum. Typically, light manufacturing uses require fewer raw materials, space, and power than those of heavy manufacturing nature, and do not utilize heavy machinery in the production of goods. The definition per our UDO is "an indoor establishment or activity primarily engaged in manufacturing, production, or assembly predominantly of previously prepared materials, finished products, or parts which does not involve on the premises the use of heat, noise, or odor generating producing processes which are detectable off-site." And light manufacturing is only permitted in the AD Airport District. Artisan's Workshop, which is the second alternative here, is defined as "an establishment for the preparation, display, and sale of individually crafted artwork, jewelry, furniture, sculpture, pottery, leather craft, hand-woven articles, and related items. They include low-impact manufacturing, assembly, repair, or servicing of industrial business or consumer machinery, equipment, products, or byproducts. Examples may include contractors and building maintenance services, low-impact clothing or textile manufacturing, commercial bakery, food service contractor, movie production facility, printing, publishing, lithography, sign-making, welding, woodworking, arts-based classrooms, and other similar uses." The 2017 Comprehensive Land Use Plan speaks to employment. Employment was identified as one of the top two factors when deciding to live in Oak Island, and was the top factor for respondents aged 50 and younger. This section also included guidance. If the town wishes to support younger families, then economic development in the pursuit of a diversified set of supporting businesses should be pursued over the long term. Three economic development strategies were proposed to bolster this effort, including supporting a diversified industry based on the mainland. The Goals and Implementing Action section of the plan recommended 10 overall goals for the town, with goal 10 stating Oak Island will strive to expand economic development within its jurisdiction. Staff analysis. The addition of light manufacturing and/or artisan's workshop as a permitted use in the CLD zoning district may support the intent of the district by providing services and commercial facilities to nearby residential communities. Per the town's definition of light manufacturing, uses in this category do not involve heat, noise, or odor generating producing processes, and thus may have minimal impact on adjacent or nearby residentially zoned properties. And three, allowing light manufacturing indoor artisan's workshop within the CLD district may also promote more traditional commercial growth in sought-after areas when retail products can be sourced directly from the manufacturer for a reduced cost, and when light manufacturers are the desired clientele for traditional services or retailers. And our suggested motion is, motion to recommend approved denial of the proposed text amendment to Section 6.5 of the Unified Development Ordinance. I went through that kind of fast because I know we have a long agenda today. Do you have any questions for me? And I think the applicant is here also.
The question I've got is more to the board, or maybe Matt. Why was light manufacturing put in the Airport District to begin with when there's no Airport District? So we're more or less been...
There is an Airport District. You're thinking of industrial district.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. I just wonder why it wasn't ever included in the CLD, if anybody remembers that was here prior.
Carrie, you were in on the discussion.
I think that it, the long-term intent was to have any type of manufacturing in an industrial district, and there was room and long-term intent for that over around the airport area, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
Around our long-term discussion. That was a great, and Mr. Pershaw, you may have a comment?
Yeah, when we went through the Table of Uses, you know, we wanted that to stay out of the retail sector, I would believe you would say.
Okay.
And then we had, we had to provide somewhere for it in the table, and that was the safest place.
So, so you're suggesting that both light manufacturing and artisan workshop be moved to, be allowed in CLD?
Or one or the other. The applicant who has, this has gotten loud all of a sudden, who has proposed the text amendment has a, what could be considered light manufacturing or artisan's workshop type use, and he would like to do that use in the CLD zoning district.
And just very briefly, I'll chime in here. Our artisan workshop in the Table of Uses is divided by square footage, so under 3,000 square feet is permitted by right in the CB, the CR zoning districts, and then over 3,000 square feet requires a special use permit in the CB district. So it's delineated a little bit further. So if, if you went with the artisan workshop style, or proposed the, you know, to allow artisan workshop in the CLD, you could include it in that category of under 3,000 square feet, and, you know, that, that helps you ensure that it's very small scale and small impact. Yeah.
And so help, help me, I'm sorry, Gene, are you?
No, that's, go ahead.
So, help me understand how this text amendment meets the criteria for CLD, specifically in the intent, "provide commercial services and facilities to residential neighborhoods." How does this particular applicant meet that criteria?
So the, well, the particular applicant has a product that he manufactures, but generally, because it wouldn't just be his use that's allowed, it would be all uses that fall under that category. Artisan manufacturers have products that can go into retail shops. Artisan manufacturers can make their product and also have a retail shop in the same structure. So at that point, it is, it's facilitating that, that retail service part of the residential use. They can manufacture things like soaps and shaving creams, candles, blankets, and all kinds of things can be, can fall under artisan manufacturing.
And so I'm sure the applicant's going to talk about whether this is both light manufacturing and retail sales in his business? Okay. The applicant can explain that. Thank you.
Our company, what we do is we manufacture or assemble fire pits. So we have a, six fittings that go into a fire pit, six brass fittings that make the burner. We drill one, well, we drill two half-inch holes into the can to make the fire pit. So there's, there's no, there will be no residential disturbance. Our shop is 3,000 square feet or less. We can provide a retail space. We, we plan on providing a few good paying jobs if we get, you know, the opportunity, and I, it's not like, I guess, we, when we went, when I first saw Brady, I don't know if we could find a, a category that we actually fit under. Like, we're not technically like manufacturing anything, we're more of assembly, and we drill two holes with two half-horsepower drill presses. So we just couldn't find anything that we fit under. So an artisan's workshop states that it's a low-impact manufacturing or assembly of goods, so we're, we basically source everything that comes in, and we assemble it. So, I mean, we just didn't know what we fall under, or...
Is there, is there welding involved, sir?
No, no. No, there's no, there's no, there's nothing hazardous on site, there's nothing. It's just, we source it, it comes in, we, we assemble it and put it together, and we drill two holes into our, our can for our fittings to fit in.
And initially, there's not, not retail sales out of your establishment?
Not, not at this point, there won't be. We'll do everything online, and then we'll open up a retail store where people can walk in.
But you will have a retail offering of the product that you manufacture, right?
We will, just not at, until we can perfect our craft of putting it together and everything, and then we will. And, you know, when we get the funds of selling stuff, then we can offer...
And will that be a retail play as opposed to a wholesale type?
It'd just be a retail. We could, we're like if, say, vacationers will come in and buy something, or if somebody in the town want to come in and buy something from us.
Okay. Because it occurred to me, from staff perspective, there's some wholesale sales allowed in CLD with some supplemental regs, right, that I saw? But this wouldn't, wouldn't qualify under that type of use?
If it was just the sale, then yes, it's the assembly.
That's why I was asking the question, right?
You have to, you know, as you mentioned, you know, when they first came in, you know, finding the exact use was a little bit tricky.
Right.
You know, since they've applied and we've looked at it, from a, from a staff perspective, if it was optionality, I think that there's very little risk and there's opportunity to expand retail if you were to allow something like an artisan's workshop under 3,000 square feet in the, in the CLD, because it does have that retail component attached to it. Yes, ma'am.
That, that was all the questions I had. Mr. Chair?
Reese.
I've got a question for Matt. And CLD is assembly allowed?
No, sir. Right now, artisan's workshop, which covers assembly, is not permitted, and light industry or light manufacturing is not permitted. So that's, that's what the applicant's trying to resolve, is to allow an assembly-type use.
Hey, may I say one more thing? All our assembly is done by hand tools. There's six fittings that we apply by hand. I mean, there's no disturbance or anything that would, that would happen.
Just from my curiosity, is this an established business, or is this something new you're starting?
It's a startup. I designed it and patented it. I hold a patent to this fire pit, and so it's something that we'd like to start here, you know, and get it started here in Oak Island. But it has the potential for, for good growth and good jobs and everything here for, so...
Thank you.
I think it's sad that, you know, somebody that's drilling two holes and assembling something has to fit into a category, but at the same time, I believe it was when I was first seated on the board, Terry, Carton, and Carrie worked, we all worked a long time on uses in different districts, and that's, you know, that's where my issue is, is, you know, we can't just change something every time something is needed, because there's a lot of effort, you know, months put into that. I've still got the, the packet at home where, where we went over it and over it and over it, and, you know, notes and notes and notes.
Well, actually, if you look at the long-term vision, as been stated by staff, the plans are for economic development and to expand the offering to include jobs and economic development within the mainland section, which this classifies on the mainland. Could this map to your perspective, could we go artisan workshop, it says, see, they are just like putting items together without the use of heavy equipment? I think the heavy equipment and the noise is what we were thinking about when we were discussing light manufacturing.
Staff perspective is that, of the applicant's request and our own analysis, artisan workshop under 3,000 square feet being permitted in the CLD, since it does have that retail component attached to it, would be, would be appropriate for the CLD. The, you know, it's, and it's a little tricky, because artisan workshop is permitted in the CB and the CR, which is here on the island, where there's certainly environmental factors, there, there's lots of residential factors that, that play in, and the CLD is more of an outlining, you know, suburban highway-oriented style of development. So it is a little tricky that those are permitted in areas where we tend to be more restrictive on our commercial offerings than areas where we tend to be less restrictive. You know, similar uses that are, you know, kind of tangentially related uses that are allowed in the CLD include things like automotive repair and boat repair and things like that. So it's not like you don't have anybody working. I think the, the addition of the artisan workshop, since it does have that retail component, makes more sense than a pure light manufacturing.
I totally agree. So, what is the pleasure of the board? I would go toward the artisan workshop and then allow that in the CLD.
And at the same time, you know, we do have to remember that pretty much everything is assembled, whether it's a furniture display and furniture's coming in, somebody's assembling that furniture in that building, they're just not drilling two holes, or you, this or this, so...
Do I have someone to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to read the statement of consistency, and I'm with a slight amendment, right? Town of Oak Island Planning Board hereby finds the proposed text amendment to add artisan workshops to CLD is consistent with the 2017 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Is that okay to make that revision, Matt?
I would add two stipulations, whether you want it to be a permitted use or a special use, and then whether you want it to be over 3,000 or under 3,000 square feet.
Can you repeat that, Matt?
Yeah, so the way our table's broken down is artisan workshop under 3,000 square feet is one category, and over 3,000 is another category. So you want to be specific about what category you're adding, and then you want to be specific about whether you want it to be a permitted use, like it is in the CB and the CR, or whether you want to be a special use. So you got kind of two decision points there to make.
So what kind of supplemental regulations would, would you guys recommend for under 3,000 artisan workshop? Do we have that?
We do have existing supplemental regulations.
Do we have those already built? Okay. So with the associated, so permitted with special use, PS would be what we'd be looking at.
With supplemental regulations, yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. I'll start over.
Sorry.
Okay. The Town of Oak Island Planning Board hereby finds that the proposed text amendment to add artisan workshops in CLD under 3,000 square feet with appropriate supplemental That is consistent with the 2017 Comprehensive Land Use Plan adopted January 10, 2017. That is consistent with Goal 10 that recommends the town will strive to expand economic development and further aligns with the identified economic development strategy of diversifying industry on the mainland, as well as being reasonable and in the public interest as the amendment would support the pursuit of a diversified set of businesses sought to strengthen the economic viability of the community. That'd be, that is my motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Good night, I'm... Thank you.
Is Hallie here? You're going to do it, okay.
I have to offer some apologies. I wasn't intending to have to do this presentation, but Hallie's out sick, so you've got to deal with me for the commercial code repair presentation today. She does send her regards, and certainly I know, Carrie, you had specifically mentioned wanting to talk to her about some new initiatives going forward.
Yes.
She'll make every effort to reach out to you, and also if we need her for a future meeting. But she did want to come in and give the commercial code repair presentation that was given at the town council recently, and cover that with the planning board as well. So I'll do my best. I worked with Hallie on this quite a bit, but there might be questions that I'm not able to answer, so please bear with me through this. But we did want to give you the opportunity to run through it. So what is commercial code repair? Commercial code repair is focused on specific changes to the code that affect commercial. And what's the goal? What would we be trying to implement with this? So improve usability, flexibility, feasibility in those commercial areas, and encourage redevelopment in walkable commercial areas. As everyone knows, especially here on the island, our commercial section is one very narrow and very built-out, and a lot of times there's very small parcels that you're having to deal with. So how do we make those commercial properties viable, where they're vacant for new development, or where they're maybe older buildings that are trying to, you know, redevelop? How do we, how do we make it easier for them to redevelop, but also get a development pattern that, you know, is walkable and what the town's trying to achieve going forward? So why would you update the commercial code? The current code does limit flexibility for business investment. New development is a lot of times not financially feasible because of upsets and renovations, you know, can be very expensive. Those of you who've tried to build a commercial building or work on a, especially a mixed-use project, those commercial code restrictions make it pretty tough. Current properties are, in a lot of instances, too constrained to be improved under today's rules, so a business owner that wants to come in and renovate a new buil, or renovate an old building and bring it up to code, sometimes they, they face some, some pretty high barriers to reach, and it really discourages a lot of small business investment in the town. And then we want to align the commercial code with our work to improve the public infrastructure in the streetscape. So for those of you who've been, you know, plugged in pretty highly to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, we're also working with a consultant on a streetscape master plan. So how do we tie what we want to do in the public realm with what we allow and can do in the private realm, basically? How do we get those two working together, basically? So how would staff approach these potential changes? So we try to align with the town strategic plan, our comprehensive land use plan, and our streetscape master plan. So kind of bringing all those three things together into alignment is very important. We want to ensure that there's sensitivity to community issues, things out there in the public. We also want to support commercial growth while maintaining the community character. You know, we've heard that a lot, especially as we've worked through the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and we don't want to lose that essential character. And we don't want to lose that essential character of the Town of Oak Island. And then recognize that each item varies in complexity. Some of these items that Hallie's put together take a whole lot of work. Some of them are much more simple and internal changes that we can make. And each item kind of depends on a different level of approval. Some items have to go to planning board and town council, you know, because it requires a UDO update. So why is this good for the Town of Oak Island? You know, it can help us strengthen the town's commercial tax base. So that reduces long-term reliance on residential property taxes. You know, as things grow and we need more services in the town, that gets more expensive. If we're not shoring up our commercial tax base, that long-term reliance can affect residential property taxes. Or you have to cut services and some, you kind of have to make that choice in the long term. It helps enable incremental redevelopment and infill. So if you've got a small parcel that you're trying to build into, we want to give you that opportunity when it's available. Or if you want to redevelop a piece of property, we want to try to make it easier. Because we do have a lot of older commercial buildings here, especially on the island, that need to be upfit. And sometimes, like I said, it's really, really tough to navigate all those rules and regulations. Help retain and attract local business and small business investments. So something that happens a lot of times through the development of a commercial code is you end up sometimes unintentionally advantaging a large-scale development versus a small-scale development. Because the large-scale development has the money, the time, the resources to actually navigate those codes, whereas small business owner, you know, they're struggling to get their business off the ground. They don't have those resources available to them. And then support year-round economic resilience. As always, we have a pretty good residential year-round component here. But obviously, we're a big tourist town too. So how can we make sure that that year-round economic resilience is there? What happens if we don't go through some of this commercial code repair exercise? Commercial property runs a risk of going underutilized or sits vacant because no one can do the outfit or it's just sitting around and no one can or wants to have or has the resources to really go through that redevelopment. Commercial growth tends to move elsewhere because it is so difficult to navigate those. So someone says, I'm gonna go one town over and start my business there. The tax base becomes increasingly residential. As I mentioned, that's kind of a long-term effect. And then it becomes more difficult to implement some of the things in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Strategic Plan and Streetscape Master Plan. Especially when it comes to streetscape stuff, you know, the, I've worked in a few jurisdictions that wanted to improve streets and want to improve kind of the feeling of place in somewhere. And so we developed a set of zoning regulations to try to create a downtown feel, you know what I mean, for new development. Well, the developers want to see the town have some skin in the game too. So they say, okay, we want you to implement the street things that you're talking about as we, you know, implement the stuff on the private side. We want to see the public side of that too. So it does create opportunities to get some synergy there and bring those groups together. So when we talk about commercial code repair, six kind of broad categories. And Hallie's put together some slides going into more detail on these. So where are there areas that could be looked at? Procedures, making it easier and faster to navigate development processes. Urban form, urban form is trying to build an environment that supports walkable, attractive and functional commercial areas. How we design our parking, to modernize parking requirements to reflect real demand and support better land use. Site development, making sure we have flexibility while ensuring a safe, functional and attractive site. How do we enable effective, attractive signs that support local businesses? And signage is a component of walkability. People don't think about that, but signage affects how you experience the street as you walk down it. And then use, how do we look at broader mixes of compatible uses in commercial zones? And we've worked on that some when we consolidated a lot of items in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. But how do we take kind of targeted looks at some things that might help us be more efficient commercially? So diving a little bit more into procedures, why does looking at procedures matter? Overly complicated rules can discourage investment, especially from small businesses or local entrepreneurs. As I mentioned earlier, you know, when you have a difficult to navigate process, somebody with a lot of time and money and investment is gonna have an advantage over a small business or a local entrepreneur just because they have more resources. So Hallie provided some examples in here. For example, if a local developer bought a building, wanted to renovate the second story, but because the requirement exceeded a certain percentage of the building value, they would have had to bring the whole structure into full compliance, basically. That made it unfeasible for them to move forward, so they scaled back and kind of did minimal improvements. So instead of upfitting the whole building, they ran into a situation where they had to go for a much smaller scale. And really, the full outfit probably, you know, would have been a better product in the end. But because of that financial component and having to bring the full structure into compliance, it kind of slowed them down a little bit. Let's see, Gene's got his hand raised there.
Can we ask a question?
Sure, absolutely. I'll try my best.
Say what now?
I'll try my best, but I certainly don't have all the answers for this.
Well, I mean, as a town, if somebody wanted to renovate a building and add a second story, why would we not want them to bring the entire building to compliance?
Right. That's a good question. So let's say, for instance, let's kind of expand on this example a little bit, I guess. There's an existing building, maybe it was built, you know, 30 years ago or something like that. Maybe the setback regulations were different. So maybe now with the new setbacks, they have a little bit of an encroachment on that side yard setback. In order to do the full renovation and expand the use of that building, and the building is already there, you know, we're adding a second story, which is, would be allowed, you know, it's under the maximum height requirement. Instead, we're telling them, you have to tear that building down and move the building, you know, maybe a couple of feet over because you've exceeded a certain percentage of the value. So, you know, it does come into a tricky balance, you know. When, what is that trigger for requiring full compliance, basically is what it boils down to? Can you, is there a way to navigate it so that you can, you know, come closer into compliance with the ordinance and still accomplish that renovation? Is, do you worry about whether the internal outfit actually counts towards that, you know, total cost that you're looking at? Because you have basically, from the zoning perspective, 75% of the building value before you have to bring it into full compliance. So, but if you're doing an internal outfit and adding a second story that still meets the height requirements, you know, that is a policy decision. You know, so, but it is, to your point, kind of a tricky balance in some instances of what makes sense and what doesn't.
Any renovation would exceed 75% of the value for it to be considered non-conforming, is that right? On a commercial business?
In this example, if it's already non-conforming, from a zoning perspective, now flood and cam are different, but from, if it's just a zoning non-conformity, you can renovate or improve that building up to 75% of the value. And then at that point, if you want, if you're going above 75%,
Then you gotta bring it up to code.
You gotta bring it up to code, compliance, yeah.
So is...
It's not the code, it's the ordinance that he's talking about.
But is that percentage really the issue, right?
In some instances, it is, well, when you think about...
Would it be higher? Allow more?
When you think about these older buildings especially, there's not, a lot of times you get a tax value and the building tax value can be pretty low because it's an older building, sometimes it's in disrepair. So in some instances, 75% is plenty. In some instances, it's not very much money towards a renovation, basically. So, you know, it does get tricky, I guess, to Mr. Brooks's point too.
So that was my question, is that allowance percentage, is it too low?
I think that's what we're gonna be continuing to talk about, yeah.
That's the question. Okay, thank you for that.
See, when you're talking compliance, you're talking zoning. You're not talking electrical, plumbing, heating and air, fire alarms.
This is local codes, this is local codes, not the state building code.
Ordinance.
If you're doing the outfit, yeah, you're gonna have to pass all your inspections for the electrical. Stuff like that.
That's where my mind went with compliance.
We can't really do the, we're required to do the building code part, yeah, absolutely. Urban form, we talked about the goal a little bit earlier, so. But that being said, much of our commercial areas are kind of narrow with smaller lot sizes that make redevelopment unlikely under commercial rules. So the example Hallie provided was, you know, a potential commercial building, planning a new building, but the setback rules actually pushed the building back too far from the road and it didn't leave a lot of room for like a delivery truck or something like that. So that site design can be difficult. And so in urban form, you know, you think about a downtown, you know, you have typically a wide sidewalk or a wide walkable area and the building is pretty close to the road in a lot of instances. It kind of creates that sense of place that you're in, that commercial area, and it makes it more attractive to be walkable. But in this instance, you know, our commercial code said, you know, you can't even come close. You gotta be this far back. And so when they designed the site, it didn't leave a whole lot of room for them to kind of get in with the delivery truck especially. Parking, how do we modernize parking? You know, excessive or outdated parking standards eats valuable land, discourages redevelopment, harms walkability. Anybody that's walked on a sidewalk down the street and then you see the Walmart off in the distance because there's, you know, a sea of parking between you and the store that maybe you're actually going to. And that's not a very attractive walking situation to be in. So it can definitely harm walkability from that perspective. The example she provided was like, say, an existing restaurant wants to add outdoor seating for their dining space, but doing so increases the required parking under the commercial code. So in some instances, they can't do the outdoor expansion now. That's also another tricky balance and something that we'll, you know, have to go through plenty of discussion, you know, things like that to make sure that we strike that appropriate balance, to make sure that people are providing adequate parking for their use. But we have a lot of uses where the, not necessarily, in my opinion, a restaurant in some instances, but a lot of uses where if you actually go in and calculate the required parking for some of these uses, it's like a whole, a whole nother site just to add the parking. And a lot of instances, that parking stays vacant, you know. People design, a lot of ordinances are designed for like the Black Friday style of day where you expect that 80% of that parking lot to be full. But the other, you know, the other 364 days of the year, the parking lot's pretty empty and not really getting utilized, so.
And I would offer, I think that parking is probably something we can do the most work on, on the commercial. And because I think part of the land use plan review and the streetscape plan wants to encourage more bikeable, walkable community. We don't hop in our car and drive two blocks down the street. We want to be able to walk. So I'm excited about seeing this part and what we can bring to the community with revisions to the parking code.
And this is closely aligned with actually one of the COG audit recommendations to look at the parking, revised parking in the CB district and with that goal in mind, certainly. Site development, so how do we provide flexibility and ensure a safe, functional, attractive site? Site development standards, sometimes that calls for complexity without really improving the outcomes. So the example Hallie used is commercial sites that have multiple driveways and curb cuts. It's very easy for a vehicle to pull in and out, but it can create safety issues and discourage walkability. You know, every time, if you're walking down a sidewalk, every curb cut is a potential conflict point with a vehicle because they might be turning in. So if you've got a bunch of them in succession or you've got a really wide one, that's a long conflict point for that pedestrian to navigate.
Let me speak to that, Matt, if you will.
Absolutely.
Site development. I wanted to expand my parking lot a little bit. An area about half the size of this room. Involved cutting down a little underbrush, hauling in some gravel. Pretty simple, but I thought I'd do the right thing and get a minor development permit. So I did. And I turned in an informal sketch of what I wanted to do. And what I got back was four pages of requirements. The first three words were survey, architect and engineer. Now, I wasn't building an apartment complex. I just wanted to push a little dirt around and throw a little gravel down. I couldn't do it, I wanted to hire some more employees, but I need parking spaces for them. Well, that's out of the picture now. It costs more in fees than the project cost. It was, it was just, it was asinine, totally, totally out of the picture. Is that something you're trying to, this is trying to correct?
Yes, sir.
Maybe cut those four pages down to two and a half?
Yeah, that's something that, this is kind of a broad overview of the project. Hallie does have, you know, have even these six categories broken down into action items and looking at the procedural requirements, making sure that her fees are right-sized, you know, and consolidated where possible. Yeah, that's 100% a part of this, yes.
Well, this is one size fits all, whether it was just a small gravel parking lot or a hotel. You had to do, go through the same, jump through the same hoops. Any competent person could walk out and look at the project and say, okay, here's your permit. That's not the case.
Yeah, that's something we want to work on and fix through this process, absolutely.
And this pertains to existing commercial or all commercial?
The intent is to repair or to work on these items for any commercial going forward, existing or new commercial. Now, we've got some limitations from the state as far as, you know, what can be retroactively applied and things like that. But we'll be working through that as we kind of dig into some of these categories and what actual text amendment would look like or something like that. We haven't really got that far into it. First, kind of the start from the top and work your way down, basically. Signage, so sign regulations to Mr. Simmons' point about complexity causes frustration for business owners, you know, especially where space is being limited. You know, business, for the example, a business renting a space in a multi-tenant building, may want to install signs that would help them stand out, but the code restriction left, leaves them with limited options. Felt their visibility was constrained, especially when competing with other businesses in the same complex. So like, how do we, how do we make sure that everybody's kind of got their fair share of signage, basically, and make it easier for those people to understand the rules and be able to come in, apply for permits simply, get their project approved and get rolling down the road to support that commercial use?
But Matt, during the land use plan discussion, we've talked about kind of visual pollution?
Yes.
So you can't just let it go wide open, is what we...
That's not the intent here, yeah, absolutely.
Just clarifying.
Yeah, and the, and that's why we bring it back to making sure that we're sensitive to local issues and maintain that community character. And signage in a walkable space looks way different than signage in a highway oriented space. You know, they're typically smaller, you see more wall signage because the building's a little bit closer, the building's more visible. So when I say this, I don't mean to say, oh, everybody can put whatever sign you want. But how do we make the signs work for those businesses and get to the, get to the form and the place that we want at the same time?
Perfect, thank you.
Use, so how do we kind of take a targeted look at compatible commercial zones and uses in there? We, this board did some great work on that when we did the table of uses. But how do we, you know, fine tune that a little bit as we go forward? So when we limit what type of businesses can open in commercial areas or even where mixed use is permitted versus not. So the example, you kind of just heard, I think maybe this exact example that she pulled from. So like a simple assembly, you know, operating in the commercial zone. Current code makes it difficult to allow this. So even though the space might work well for a business, you know, how do we make sure that when we have, especially in existing spaces and someone might want to renovate and upfit, the space is there and sitting vacant, you know, it would be better used to actually be a productive commercial environment? How do we kind of make that happen? And so she ends with just the six again. As I mentioned, these are the six broad categories. She's already got it broken down into, I believe it was 21 kind of specific items that vary in complexity and vary in, you know, community sensitivity, things like that that we've already looked at. That was presented to town council at their workshop for those 21 items. So we did want to give you guys a briefing on it because some of it does have to come through the planning board, especially if it relates to the UDO. So really didn't want you to see some of that stuff come up and say, well, I must have missed that council meeting and I didn't see when this was presented. So, you know, once again, Hallie sends her regards, apologizes for being out, you know, but she's definitely available to us going forward. but she's definitely available to us going forward. So I do want to make sure that she does come talk to you guys in the future, but it's unintended and unfortunate, so.
Yeah, Matt, isn't there, isn't Hallie working through council for a consultant to help with kind of the vision of what kind of commercial businesses we want to try to attract? Kind of what that economic development plan looks like to bring more jobs and whatnot to the community?
Yes, ma'am.
Some outside help on that going on?
Yeah, Hallie's working with, it's actually a state program, so it's not like a third-party consultant. And it's, I think it's the Rural Economic Development Group. Don't, like I said, I wish she was here so she can answer that question.
No, I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I just thought...
She is working with them on how to move forward a potential economic development strategic plan as well. So, yeah, how do we, how do we retain and get businesses to come?
Yeah, because it occurs to me that, you know, to make these changes in our ordinances and our code, need to kind of be moving in the same direction as what kind of businesses we want to attract, right? So that it kind of, we build the things that people want to come here. And, you know, we've got kind of a specific demographic, you know, a limited year-round population and things like that. So I think that research to see what kind of businesses we can bring here and should bring here will be very important as we go through all these revisions and changes.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
And Matt, just, this is just general knowledge, I don't, how, when people, when commercial businesses come to you with some permitting to make some revisions, how often do they have these kind of issues? Like, is it 50% of the time, 70% of the time?
Every time.
We're inhibiting our business development, that's...
Mr. Pershur's right. A lot of times, folks do need to come into our office and sit down with someone to help understand. And that's part of this too, you know. How do we make it easier for those people so that there's less questions, you know, it's much clearer, the procedure's much clearer. The permit fee is based on your project size or right size and things like that. So that there are, you know, less questions and less navigation that you have to go through in order to do that. So a lot, part of it is kind of the making it better for the customers and the citizens who might want to employ some of this, yeah.
Yeah, I guess what I was trying to get is...
Pretty regular, I wouldn't have a percentage off the top of my head, but I don't know that it's every time, but it's a lot.
I recognize you guys do a lot of good coaching, right? You try to help people through the ordinances, help them understand. And I guess I was trying to get at, how often do projects not move forward because of what we've currently got on the books? You mentioned a couple of examples right here.
Yeah, the examples are from similar examples to what's happened in the town. So there are a handful, but, and you're right, we do provide assistance. So anybody who, even under the current code, needs help can come talk with Taylor, Justice, or Brady, and we'll help you navigate those codes for sure and let you know what your options are and aren't. But, you know, even having to cut down on that conversation would be an assistance for folks.
And then there's the final question comment I would have. So I think, I think what I heard, because I actually sat in the council workshop where they were working through this, the 21 items or 22, however many there were. And the thing that I liked to hear was that there was more about, the intent of this whole project is more about carrots instead of sticks in terms of helping commercial businesses develop here. So I was happy to hear that kind of approach and attitude about this whole code repair project that we'll be working on. And so I guess part of that will be that the town will work on ways to try to incent businesses, especially vacant buildings, to try to be developed and help them with that. Do you have any thoughts conceptually about what that would look like?
Not that I've dived too deep into in my mind. You know, when we think about the current state of state regulations as far as what we can and can't do, especially in commercial areas. You're right, we'll have to, in some instances, unless those rules change, we'll have to heavily rely on incentivizing because we want people to voluntarily, you know, do the things that we're asking them to do. So how do we get them to do that? You know, maybe you tie it in with planned streetscape improvements. Maybe you tie it in with, you know, public parking opportunities or something like that. But like I said, we haven't, we haven't really dug too deep down into that. And really don't want to because we're asking, you know, for council to give us some feedback and whether this is something that they even want us to pursue or not. So once we get the green light on that, if we should get the green light on that, that's when we'll really start digging into some hard strategies on how to make this stuff happen.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns, feedback, anything like that that I can pass on to Hallie? If not, you know, feel free to reach out.
And the takeaway will be that I think there'll be, how many items coming back of the list of changes? How many were for planning board, Matt? I think the majority of them, right?
Yeah, I think probably 19 of them required some. Yeah, some of them's internal, some of them just go to council, like fees, like the schedule fee doesn't go to the planning board. But a lot of the technical changes to the UDO, and I think that, you're right, that was at least the vast majority, if not almost all of them.
Then we'll have some...
I've got some work to do.
Have some fun work to do.
Keep us busy, that's okay.
Look forward to it, Matt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nothing else, I'll pass it back over to, oh, he's getting it loaded up. Taylor?
All right, me again. All right, now we're going to talk about the UDO text amendment to Article 10, Part 4, which is temporary sign regulations. At the June 10th, 2015 meeting, town council approved a motion directing the planning board to review the ordinance as it pertains to temporary signs in the right-of-way, specifically to consider allowing temporary signs in the right-of-way 10 feet from the edge of the road pavement. The current ordinance, temporary signage is addressed throughout Part 4, Article 10 of the UDO. As it pertains to the directive, sections which would require amendments to allow or expand the placement of temporary signs in the right-of-way may include 1024.3, 1025.5, 1026.5.1, and 1026.5.4. Section 1026.5.4 allows temporary signs in the right-of-way when the right-of-way of such a street is larger than 20 feet wide on a given side or when the sign is placed five feet from the house or structure side of sidewalks. This is contrary to Sections 1025.5 and 1026.5.1, which prohibits signs from being placed or installed in the right-of-way. The town does not have an ordinance which restricts off-site signage. So some history and legal considerations. At the September 4th, 2018 meeting, a text amendment was approved, which added Section 1026.5.4, creating the exception to prohibited signs in the right-of-way for temporary signs. Per Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, sign regulations must be content neutral. That is distinguishing the permissibility of signs based solely on characteristics such as size, location, or construction type. Local ordinance generally cannot regulate the content of signs. Therefore, all commercial temporary signage, whether it advertises a product, service, or business, or is non-commercial in nature and displays a political view, opinion, or religious ideology, should be considered equally. Further, sign ordinances may distinguish between on-premise and off-premise signs per the City of Austin v. Reagan National Advertising of Austin LLC. And there are some examples that you may be familiar with of temporary signs that you see around. So comprehensive plan compliance, and this is the 2017 comprehensive plan. The plan states, signs should be constructed to blend with their surroundings and should be in proportion to the structure for which they are supporting. Where possible, landscaping should be provided with freestanding signage to soften the visual impact. Due to their time-limited and transitory nature, temporary signs are not typically installed or constructed, created to blend with the surroundings and are not installed in relation to a structure. Implementing Action I-110 states, the town will seek to create a partnership with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Local private organizations and residents and property owners develop and implement a landscape and beautification program for public rights-of-way. Allowing signs in the right-of-way may foster ground maintenance issues for NC DOT and public works and may be contrary to the beautification efforts by the town and other local organizations and residents. Some staff analysis. The sign ordinances of seven other area counties and municipalities were reviewed for comparison purposes as to the permissibility of signs in the right-of-way. Southport, Holden Beach, Ranja County, New Hanover County, Wrightsville Beach, North Topsail Beach, and Emerald Isle do not allow signs in the right-of-way. Southport and Holden Beach do not allow no off-premise signs. I think I worded that funny, but no off-premise signs.
Off-premise signs defined as?
So that could be a commercial sign, typically a billboard is how you would think of it. But it can be anything, it could be your business, but you've got a banner advertising your business on someone else's property.
Thank you.
An amendment could consider additional regulations that look at time limitations, distance between signs, and addition property owner permission. Some enforcement challenges that staff typically has to deal with with temporary signs is it's difficult to determine the date of installation and reinstallations. So our ordinance has a 60-day clock where if someone has a temporary sign, they're supposed to come get a permit. That doesn't really happen in practice that often because it's hard for us to determine when that sign was there. Have they picked up the sign in the meantime when we first saw it and then reinstalled it, thus restarting the clock? So that part of the ordinance just doesn't really get enforced totally. Second, sign ownership may be impossible to ascertain. So especially when they're non-commercial in nature, it might just say, no war. Or there's the, the thank you Jesus signs are pretty, those are pretty common, those are not, they don't have any kind of phone number, address, or business associated with them. So if we have those signs that are in violation, we don't know who they belong to, we don't have anyone to cite. We just kind of have to take them and hope someone comes and gets them. So environment and safety considerations. Temporary signs may become dislodged during weather events and can land in waterways or other unintended areas and may pose a risk to persons or traveling vehicles. So I think this came about from town council with the idea of real estate signs in particular. I used to be a real estate agent, so I'm very, you know, aware of keeping track of my signs because they're kind of expensive and not wanting to lose them. The business I worked for, anytime there was a name storm, would say, go get your signs, pull them up because they help you pay for them, they don't want to lose them either. Going back to the previous point of sign ownership, it's hard, you know, we can't tell everyone to go pick up your signs because we don't know who they belong to. If they're all over across the town or multiple towns, those people likely are not going to come pick them up because they've got a lot of signs to pick up. The suggested motion is a motion to recommend amendments or no amendments to the temporary sign ordinance to allow or disallow temporary signs in the right-of-way. And I have lots of notes on this, I tried to come really prepared on this because I expect a conversation.
So Taylor, the content neutral also means that we're not allowed to allow such a thing for a specific business or industry type either, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Gene.
My question is, okay, if we leave it like it is now, and then two months, we're going to come back and go over signs again for the business thing?
I can thoroughly understand where you're coming from there. The intent for the commercial program here is...
Thank you. In my personal opinion, why would we want to do anything different than what we're doing now? Because every, the county don't allow it, Southport don't allow it, other beaches around here allow it. Do we want to do it because of the beautification, everything else? And being in the DOT right-of-way and everything, for the mowing and the hazards and stuff like that? I'd say leave it like it is, is my opinion, but...
Yeah, and to your point, Gene, I guess we need to understand how, how does this, any proposed text amendment here prevent, you know, any kind of business operational hindrance? Like, who is being hurt by this?
That's a tough one. I don't really, wouldn't think of it so much as being hurt because there are allowances for people to put their signs when they need them. Real estate agents can put them on their private property of the property they're advertising. That's how it is already. There is a special exception, if they're on a street that has a really wide right-of-way that they can put it 20-foot back. So I think that's how it came up, is maybe there was some confusion of what could and couldn't be done. We sent, made a flyer and sent that out to kind of aid in that, to help people know where they could put a sign to make sure their signs weren't getting picked up. But I think that is how it came about. But businesses, it wouldn't change anything with an established business that has their property in a structure. The sign, their freestanding signs, temporary signs could still go on their property.
So this is strictly for the temporary cardboard or plasterboard signs that...
Yeah, there's a list of materials they can be, but the, I think it's six, six square feet is the limitation for temporary signs and eight square feet in other zoning districts. But it's specifically for those signs, and real estate signs fall under that.
Mr. Chairman, do you want a motion or, and then we have a discussion or...
Yeah, let's do a motion and then discuss.
I'll make a motion to recommend no amendments to the temporary sign ordinance.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
We're going to discuss.
Oh, yes, Reese.
I'll recuse myself on this for obvious reasons.
Okay. Art?
I have some questions and some comments. Taylor, the signs that we see that are buried in the ground versus the metal signs that you think of with a realtor sign? It seems like to me, we're seeing more and more of the buried signs that hang over and assign...
Like the posts, the post signs, yeah.
Is, is there any difference between the ones you stick in the ground versus a buried post?
They're both considered temporary signs because they're temporary in nature. They're only meant to be installed for the period that the house is or property is for sale.
And they would both fall under the six-square-foot limit?
They're supposed to, or eight square, it's eight square feet for most zoning districts. The political signs are limited to six-square-feet.
Gotcha, okay. My, my concern is, we see a lot of the signage that's buried post that are there year-round. You have rental companies that have them out front advertising the rental unit, they're there year-round. And if that's temporary, it should not be. Also, there are a handful of lots that are vacant, undeveloped lots, that have some quite large posted signs that have like a contractor's business name. It doesn't say it's for sale or anything else, obviously, just advertisement for that business. I think we definitely need better enforcement whichever way we go because I don't think it's happening now. In my opinion, if I had any preference, it would be to see no signs at all in the right-of-way. I've got two pictures here that I'm glad to share if anybody wants to look at it. But one of them is a house that is for sale. And it's got a post buried in the ground with a hanging sign. And it's got two metal signs in the ground that says, "Open House." And they, they were out there, all three of those signs were out there for over two weeks, just around the clock, day and night. There's another one that the house is for sale, it has a regular metal stuck in the ground, for sale, realtor sign. But then it's got electrical contractors got his setting out there, you've got the landscapers got his setting out there. And if we move those closer to the road, we are only cluttering it up that much more, increasing the chance of, you know, being in the sight distance. So I would not support doing it. Like I said, if anything, I'd rather see them not be there at all. I feel also, I mean, I'm not an expert in that field, but I think this day and time, more people search on the internet than they do right around looking for a sale sign. So I don't think, you know, moving them forward should be that big of an issue, but that's my feeling.
We do try to pick up the ones in the right-of-way that we see. We've got, if you go to our offices, we've got a nice stack in our little lobby area. But when they're on, when they are pushed back, and I know, I think I know exactly what houses you're talking about, when they are pushed back and they have the multiple, we kind of have to go the route of sending them a letter and hope, and go in the violation route rather than entering their property and taking them like we can in the right-of-way. But I know exactly, I think, which ones you're talking about. The other thing is the, keeping the sold sign up way after the fact. It's mostly just because they want, you know, their name out there, which... It's mostly just because they want, you know, their name out there, which I understand, I used to do that too.
I know there was a commercial building that had two signs out there, and they were there about six months after the building, so.
Yeah.
But now, if I put it in, if it's on the property, it's not, it's not in the right-of-way, is it still a temporary sign?
It would still be a temporary sign because you can see it from the right-of-way, and you haven't gotten a permit for it.
But you're allowed to leave it there for X amount of days without a permit. And then if you don't want to get the permit, you pull the sign up, put it right back down.
And another different, like Taylor mentioned, we're authorized to remove signs in the town right-of-way, but we can't, if it is on someone's property, you know, we can't just walk onto somebody's property and pick up their sign. It has to be on that public part of the property. And I'll just add one more little wrinkle to this, just for everybody's knowledge. There's a few DOT roads in the town, and DOT is very specific about whether they want municipalities picking up temporary signs in their right-of-way. And basically, i-if the town has a maintenance agreement where they're responsible for, you know, mowing or something like that, then DOT will typically authorize you to pick up signs in that right-of-way because they know you're out there mowing it and stuff like that. But on those roads where there's not that shared maintenance agreement, DOT, it's kind of conflicting because DOT doesn't allow the sign in the right-of-way, but they won't let the town go remove a sign from that right-of-way unless there is that maintenance agreement. So when you see, you know, if you see a temporary sign out on like Middleton or Midway or Long Beach where we're not maintaining it, the reason we can't pick it up is because DOT won't authorize us to actually go out there and do the removal on it. Yeah.
Matt, do you all have a process, like if someone complains to you that those are forwarded to the appropriate people at VITA, I mean, NCDOT?
Yeah, we can contact the Maintenance Department from Brunswick County. That being said, they have two maintenance crews for the entire county, so the, and they have usually, in their view, more pressing matters to attend to. So it is a very slow response when we've had to, you know, contact somebody about signage. They're just so, they're just stretched so thin, they don't really have the manpower to do it, which is why, you know, when we first got here, I contacted them and said, "Hey, can we, can we do this?" And they said, "Unless you have a maintenance agreement, we don't, we don't want the town going out there and doing it." So tried to offer really to help them keep their rights away clean. But it does get very tricky when you're, even though it's on public property, or that sign is someone's private property that they put out there, and you're essentially confiscating it, so, yeah.
I guess, just for the discussion on my motion before we vote, I think, for me, I don't hear of a hardship for businesses. I totally understand all of our businesses wanting to market aggressively and be success, and support them in being successful, but I don't hear of a hardship that's being created. And in light of us not being able to help specific industries or businesses, I, we're limited in what we can do here. So that's, I just wanted to explain why I made the motion, and that's kind of what I think would be our compelling reason for not making any changes at this time to the ordinance.
Yeah, it's, it's just not realtor signs, you have to look at all of them. And if, if everybody pulls their signs out to the right-of-way, well, it's the same marketing plan.
That's right.
It's just a few feet closer to the road, you're still going to have
Right.
Sign after sign of any type, so there's no benefit to pulling it out.
Doesn't help them specialize or be an individual type of business marketing. That's right, that's right.
Mr. Chair, can...
Yes, sir.
Some, I know this doesn't apply to what we've, directly to what we're discussing and voting on today, but I would like to note that I think in this ordinance, to me, it is very confusing. First of all, if you look at prohibited signs, if I stop right there, I would think, okay, I can't have it. But if you are smart enough to continue to read, then there's all these ways you can have it. So I really think that's something we need to look at cleaning up at some point. And the other thing is this thing about the 60 days. There's got to be some way to come up with something that's better than that, because that just gives room for people to play games. I left it up tonight, I'll stick it back in there tomorrow morning. And so I think that really needs to be looked up, looked at, and come up with something creative that can control that better.
Could we, Matt, as you guys look at signs through the, is this something we can look at? Because you already have a conflict. To Mark's point, it says right here that, you know, one section says this and another section says that. Those are the kind of things that we've been trying to work on cleaning up in the UDO. So maybe when we're looking through, could we mark this to Mark's point and try to clean up this whole temporary signs?
Yeah, I would encourage it. Part of the, even part of the commercial code repair is to make the ordinance make more sense and be easier to navigate, right? So, you know, when you get to the section that applies to you, that's the section that applies to you. You don't have to, you know, go five sections further to understand the allowance or not. Yeah, absolutely.
So we need a, but...
Yes. Do I have, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor? Approved. Okay. Code's done. Looks like we are down to old business.
For our last action is the proposed text amendment to Article 7 of the UDO for the supplemental regulations. You guys put in a lot of great work to review the supplemental regulations. I don't even have slides for you because we've kind of trudged through this quite a bit over the last few months. Staff has taken the, tried to take the suggestions, the planning board and the recommendations that we made throughout that review. We look back at all the minutes from those meetings to try to catch everything. We got them drafted in a red line draft where you got summarized in your agenda packet. This is an opportunity to go ahead and make a recommendation on those draft amendments. Certainly, if in your review, you see something that was missed or something that you'd like to add as a part of your recommendation, this is a great opportunity to do it. But otherwise, staff does recommend approval and feels that it is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, so.
Very good. Gene, any?
No, sir.
Carrie? Have you got some notes on this section?
Just a couple of little things, just a couple of little things. 7.35, bed and breakfast, homes, there's a reserved section there, Matt, remind us what that was about.
Just to avoid having to renumber the whole, the whole subsection, so that was striking out the maximum occupancy allowance. And so instead of deleting it and renumbering it, just leaving it as reserved in case there's a, if there's a regulation that comes down the line that we didn't think of, we can pop it in the reserve section.
And then on 7.38, convenience stores, there's a lot of things there to describe, 100 feet here and setbacks there and whatnot, access points, setbacks. What we've tried to do, I think, and you've been working really hard on, is creating some diagrams for people. So where there's things like this, of where you're talking about dimensional setbacks and whatnot, to maybe have a picture there to help? Or is that somewhere else? Just an idea?
No, it's something that we can, that we can definitely work on developing, though, absolutely. And I know we talked about with, when we did the dimensional table, updating those standards as well.
Yes, yes.
So we can certainly, if there's anything you think is worth seeing in the dimensional table, or a picture representation of that, let us know, and we'll be happy to add that on our list of stuff to develop.
I would just...
More visual references is good.
Absolutely. Simpler, easier to read, whatever, so that would be just a thought for that. And then on 7.45 for seafood processing, I know we had a lot of conversation about that at the last meeting. Don't want to belabor that point, right? But I thought there was going to be some text suggested about, or maybe definition clarification with respect in this particular thing regarding processing versus retail. Did we need to do anything there, Matt?
Yes, I apologize, I thought I had made that edit in this draft, but it looks like it didn't get copied over in Word on that. I'm looking through my draft ordinance right now to see if I stuck it in the wrong place or missed it somewhere else. That's a good catch, thank you, Carrie, for that. Hang, I apologize, I did have some draft ordinance there based on the discussion that we had, and I just don't have it in front of me in this ordinance. It must have missed it through the, through the drafting of the text, or got saved in the wrong place. Yeah, I think the crux of the discussion we had was kind of whether differentiate, you know, incidental processing maybe versus, you know, full-on processing, purchase and sales, I think is what it broke down to. We could certainly, let's see, if you wanted to add something, we could add a definition into the ordinance that defines this particular category as, you know, where the processing and purchases the main component or something like, or, you know, is the primary use of the business to allow it, you know, if you have a retail, retail location, and there's some incidental processing there that you just have to do versus a full-scale, you know, I don't know what you would call it, like fish processing plant type of thing, I think that's kind of what we're trying to split the hair on, maybe?
Yes, yeah.
So if you wanted to, as a part of your recommendation, add then a definition for seafood processing that gets to that, we'll be happy to draft that and present it as a part of town council recommendation as well. That's something we can do. And I apologize, I thought I had put it in here, but it got lost in the shuffle, I suppose.
Wouldn't that maybe change the 7.45 dot 1 some, depending on what that, how that would come out, Matt? The definition between the two may change this particular text, is what I'm getting at. Maybe, should we hold this one out?
You can, yeah, you can hold it out.
Next month, and you come back with the change, and then maybe we go through everything else?
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody?
Because the definitions were totally different than...
Yeah.
Right. So if we could just hold 7.45 out with everybody's agreement and ask Matt?
Yeah.
And Taylor, or whoever, to come back with some cleanup of that with better definitions, I think that would be great. 7.55 golf cart and low-speed vehicle sales and rentals. I had a note for 7.55 dot 2, golf cart repairs are only permissible inside.
Yeah, can catch that.
So just a small change there.
And while you're addressing that, I'll jump in. Noted as well as it's in the minutes, that some more research was going to be done and brought back to us about the outdoor storage and so forth.
Yeah, I think we, I think he's got here covered that vehicles on display for sale or rent, for the outside marketing mark, I think, is what you're talking about.
There was a question about...
We could make an exception, I think he's made that exception. Vehicles on display for sale or rent should not require screening during business hours. Are we okay with that?
I think there was a question about what's being done now, and people that would try to say, "We've been doing that all along," and what we're going to look at, how could we get a feel for?
Yeah, and I've read down the island a couple of times, and from what I've seen, unless, I mean, you guys are residents, so you know better than me, it would appear that most of the vehicles that are on display are typically moved into storage after hours. So I didn't get the sense that it would be a big problem for us to amend a rule like this. And a lot of the businesses have, you know, when I first started, some of the businesses just had, had everything that was even stored just kind of out in the yard, and that some of them have done a good job of trying to get those screened with a no-pick fence and stuff like that. So it appears that there's plenty of room available for them to be able to navigate that.
And then, I think as a follow-up to Mark, I had a note that, Matt, you were just going to confirm that this was not any type of, would not be perceived as a downzoning effort to add this fencing and screening, so we're okay on that?
Yeah, I wasn't able to, I think everybody who has a location, you know, now we have people that bring them onto the island, but I think all the locations that we have, unless this board is aware of another one, typically have a fenced area for the, for the golf cart storage. And certainly, if there's one that y'all know of that would, that might trip us up, please let me know.
Final thing, under, and then I'll stop, I'm sorry. Under mixed-use, 7.58 mixed-use, we struck condominium, which I think we all agreed on. Matt, I just, 7.58 dot 5, in no case shall the number of non-residential units exceed the number of residential units in a mixed-use condominium project. Is that valid? And basically what we'll be looking at in...
So, I mean, it is a valid ordinance, it's on the books. It's what we prohibit from, or what we require for a mixed-use development. That being said, I know we talked a lot about mixed-use previously, and I think especially with the commercial code repair and getting through the building form and things like that, I know the mixed-use category is probably one that will require a bunch of attention to make sure that we're...
So maybe more to come?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Reese?
Reese? Reese?
Reese? No comment? Mark?
I think all of mine have been covered. One question, though, Matt, we were talking about the fencing with the golf carts. Walk me through how enforcement of that would be done or is being done.
Yeah, so, that's a good point, because a lot of places close after hours for town staff, right? That being said, we're lucky enough to have several zoning technicians that do work on the island, so if there's an after-hours violation, that it's after business hours that's happening, if anybody contacts our office, we're happy to make sure that somebody's available for after-hours check on that to determine whether something's being violated or not. We've had to do that a few times in some instances, but, yeah, just give our office a call, you're right, we won't be able, you know, if they close at 6 o'clock, we're not going to, town staff's gone home for the day, but if somebody lets us know about it, I can make sure that somebody schedules some time, you know, and is available to do that evening check on something like that. Yes, sir?
Great.
I think it looks good.
I do, too.
Yeah, thanks for the red line draft, that really helped in following and checking it against each...
Yeah, we appreciate the layout.
Yes, thank you, Matt, welcome.
The only thing, in the statement of consistency, I don't remember every single thing we've gone through here, though, but I just had a question. It mentions balance the needs of new development and existing neighborhoods, and much of what we've dealt with here has been on the commercial side.
Yeah.
So is that still valid for that consistency statement, Matt?
I think it does, because when you think about the new development versus existing neighborhoods, you know, a lot of, what a lot of people would consider right behind the commercial areas and existing neighborhood, and this board has worked to add some things like dark-skylighting provisions, hours of operations, and, and some specific screening requirements for certain uses. So I do think it does add to the, to the preservation and the, and the needs of those existing neighborhoods versus the commercial development here in the town. But it certainly, it's your consistency statement, so feel free to add or remove anything you like if you want to adopt something.
We need to add the exemption of...
Yeah, okay, so, I'll make a motion if you have one.
Yes.
The Town of Okinawan Planning Board hereby finds that the proposed text amend, is it amendment?
Amendment, yes, ma'am.
Amendment, with the exception of 7.45, however you want to word that to be addressed later, is consistent with the 2017 Conference of Land Use Plan adopted January 10, 2017, as it is consistent with implementing Action I.2O that recommends the town develop a UDO that provides a simpler, more flexible, more easily administered regulatory document, greater clarity for landscaping, tree screening requirements, consistency with North Carolina state statutes, balance the needs of new development and existing neighborhoods, and establish policies that characterize future land use development patterns. There's a little typo there. And establish mitigation criteria and concepts, concepts to minimize conflicts. That would be my motion.
I have a second.
I second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Staff reports. No major staff reports for today. We're chugging along downstairs, but I will give two shout-outs. We had a open house yesterday for contractors, developers, kind of a development services open house, members of the community.
So members of the, uh, community were there. We kind of, we presented, uh, just kind of a high-level overview of development services. Hallie, uh, gave the commercial code enforcement, uh, uh, presentation. We had a Q and A with some of the development services staff about some questions that we had got in advance. Got solicited some feedback for chapter thirty-two. A- and had breakout sessions where, uh, people could talk with staff individually if they had, you know, specific issues they want to talk about. We had a good turnout, so just want to shout out everybody that came to that, um, you know, and as always, we're here to a- answer questions, so feel, if you missed that one, feel free to stop by the office and we'll be happy to help you.
Well, I was going to say, did that, was that recorded for, for some, for the public to find again?
I don't, I had to check my mic and see if it was recorded or not. Um, I'd be happy to, to do that for you, yes ma'am.
I think that would be helpful for the, for the board to have access to, to be able to watch the thing.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure there were a lot of great questions that would be helpful for us, I think.
Yes, ma'am, I'll, I'll check with him on that.
Thank you, Matt.
Um, and then, uh, we've got July thirtieth, um, coming up pretty soon is the open house for the bike plan. Um, it's going to be here in town council chamber, starts at five o'clock. Um, so anybody who's interested in how to improve our bicycle network, enhance safety and make it easier to navigate the island on a, on a bicycle, or even pedestrian or, or anything like that, um, uh, definitely stop by and give us some feedback. They, the, that was done with the town through a grant from the N C D O T, so got, uh, a, a good grant on that, um, and the consultant's been working hard. We had a public survey that they've, they've closed out and, uh, they're going to be coming and asking for feedback on potential bicycle projects and plans. So come on out and, and let us know what you think. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Matt, will you update us on the, the, um, next land use plan actions generally?
Yeah, absolutely. So the comprehensive land use plan, the draft is out there in the public right now. It's available on our website for anybody to review. It's still also open for comment, so if you go to the, the plan website, you can take a look at the draft plan that they've got and there's a button that you can just send a simple comment in. That, that goes to me and the consultant, so we make sure we don't lose anything in the shuffle. But that closes on the twenty-fifth. What happens from there is the, uh, the consultant will take all the feedback we got through the comment period, work on any adjustments that need to be made based on that feedback. Um, and then they'll be, uh, presenting it to the planning board for a recommendation. The, the process for adoption of a comprehensive land use plan is the same as a text amendment. So it'll come to the planning board for a recommendation. You'll get a chance to ask questions of the consultant, talk to them about what we found. Uh, and then when it goes to town council, it requires a public hearing prior to adoption. So there'll be a, following the planning board recommendation, there'll be a, a public hearing at town council. So certainly still plenty of opportunities for folks to, to come, uh, check the plan out, get, see a presentation from the, uh, consultant and, and give your feedback along the way, so.
It's, and it's very important for the public to be involved in this process too because when, when the public is critical of the, of the development ordinances and whatnot, they have to understand that this land use plan is our guiding document. It's the thing that drives what we do along with state statute. So I, I'd like to see people understand it, be involved, know where it comes from, where our actions and work comes from. That's how you have input into where we go in the future.
And we've been lucky, we've had good, good engagement so far, so hopefully that, that train keeps on moving. I know we had, um, over six hundred responses on the, the public survey that we did, whi- which is pretty, pretty tremendous for a town this size, so, yeah.
And is the streetscape plan in there as well now? What draft?
Yeah, the, the streetscape plan will be, um, in there as well, yes ma'am. Uh, and basically that, that works essentially from the consultant's side wrapped up so that they've pretty much finished the, the draft of the streetscape plan.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
But it'll be presented as a part of the comprehensive land use plan as well.
Exciting to see this come to fruition.
It's going to have a whole different format than the prior land use plan. It's going to be a lot more smaller, more concise. So it's nice to see.
One other question, the, uh, street, public, private, how's that project going?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm glad you asked that. I gave you guys a brief update on it, uh, I think maybe last month or the month before probably. What we've done internally, uh, after we reviewed the, the existing technical manual that was submitted to D O T for the town, at the same time, uh, the stormwater administration group was looking at doing a stormwater design manual. So what they did was go ahead and ask the, uh, the consultant that was doing the stormwater design manual to fold in the technical manual and basically put everything together, which is another good consolidation because you'll have basically, if you want to do streets for stormwater, you're going to have one book that you can look at. That being said, uh, the existing technical manual, um, it, it might be worth, uh, I mean, there's nothing wrong with it. We just, the, the consultant's just looking, looking at it from an engineering perspective. Um, I'm certainly comfortable, uh, you know, bringing that existing technical manual document and a short text amendment to you next month. And then when the consultant finishes their work, we can just have it as an update to that existing manual. I'm fine, uh, anyway, but, yeah, that, that'd be a pretty simple text amendment to reference it, get you guys to recommend it.
Okay.
Um, if council wants to adopt everything, then it'll be effective, so, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Very welcome.
Board reports, Gene?
I don't have anything.
Carrie?
Nothing for me.
Reese?
Yeah, I want to get back into what we were talking about earlier. I was glad that the manager addressed the council last week on exactly what Matt was talking about and that's, uh, making it less complicated to, to get things done, especially in the commercial area. I was trying to do that myself. I've got a plan right now to expand our building for another four thousand square feet and I'm, I'm afraid to pull the trigger on it. I tried to do a little parking lot and, and got buried. So, uh, I'm, I'm glad that they're at least trying to go that way. We'll see, we'll see how much progress they make over the next few months. And I'm glad they're working on it anyway.
Thank you. Mark?
Just mentioned, I attended the, um, um, stakeholder group that Matt referenced and just wanted to say, I was impressed with the turnout and, um, very good information. I was pleasantly surprised with the presentation.
David?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, uh, staff, thank you. And again, our community is very special. We have very good engagement and, uh, it's a great place to live, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Adjourn. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.